The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call for order. The May 1 quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council and at this time I'd ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our only quasi judicial public hearing tonight is for Evans Farm Town Home site and subdivision plan. This hearing was continued from our April 3 meeting and overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. After the April 3 meeting, all council members received an email from Mr. Barker of the Planning Department outlining the community gathering space requirements for the Austin Concept Plan. A copy of the email is available to anyone who would like to review it. Mr. Barker is available tonight to answer any questions about that topic. Council has also placed a discussion item on the May 8 regular meeting agenda to discuss the town's LDO standards for recreation space for town home communities. Given that information, is there any council member who has a fixed opinion or bias regarding tonight's agenda or hearing? And I'll start on my right, Mayor Pro Tim Adcock.
No, sir.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
I don't?
Nope.
No, sir.
Okay. I'll now ask if any council members had any ex parte communications regarding this case since April 3, starting on my left.
I have not.
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 All right, moving forward. Mr. Silverstein, can you remind the council and the audience of the posture of this hearing and whether witnesses are still under oath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. According to my notes, this matter was continued for the purpose of seeing if the applicant could tweak its plan to address concerns regarding density, traffic, and open spaces. The prior testimony given is part of the record in this case. This is not a rehearing, so the witnesses that testified previously are still sworn. The applicant has the burden of introducing substantial material and competent evidence of the six criteria. If they do so, the plan should be approved unless there is substantial material incompetent evidence that one or more of the criteria have not been met.
Thank you. And at this time, Mr. Hells of our staff will update us on any changes made by the applicant since April 3.
Thank you, council. As you see, tonight's item is a continuance of the Evans Farm Town Home, now known as the Village of Evans Farm, to distinguish it somewhat from the adjacent subdivision. Evans Farm is a neighborhood in which is located within the Austin Activity Center The applicant has made several changes to address council concerns heard at their April meeting. Just to be clear, this request does not include any minor modifications that were not added since the April meeting, and the plan is before council simply because of the number of units proposed. Just to remind, council location is the southeastern quadrant of the intersection of Green Level Church Road and O'Kelly Chapel Road at the far western border of the Austin Regional Activity Center. This is the plan that was originally presented to council in April, provided additional shading to cover some of the open space concerns that were addressed. The two light green portions of the site were the neighborhood greens totaling approximately 12,000 square feet or .28 acres. The darker green areas were additional open spaces on the site, including buffers, some additional depth along the streets to meet the Austin plan. Those totaled 2.79 acres for a total open space on the site of 3.07 acres or 17 percent of the site. Since April, the applicant has come back with a revised plan. That plan lost several units, bringing the total down to 147. They provided additional green in the northern end of the site, and the light green area is now totaled 1.54 acres with additional buffer area of 2.98 acres for a total open space on the site of 4.52 acres or 25 percent of the total site area. This is the original drawing for the applicant's concept, the treatment along Strindall Drive. This has not been updated to include the traffic circle, which we'll discuss shortly, but it remains the applicant's intent with the plaza, art plaza there at the corner of Strindall and Valonia Loop and a seat wall running down the length of Strindall, that The additional open space neighborhood green they added in this revision is up in the northern end, like I said, at the intersection of O'Kelly Chapel and Austin Avenue, includes a large open play area, playground equipment, some picnic facilities, grills, picnic tables, and a shelter. As well as open space concerns, council did raise some questions about traffic calming measures along Strindall Drive, extension coming from Evans Farm subdivision to the south up to O'Kelly Chapel Road. And the applicant did make two changes to address that. The first is installation of a, or proposed installation of a traffic circle. Should note, that's not a roundabout, is a smaller, more compact intersection improvement. It tends to function a little bit more like a four-way stop in controlling those movements. It is located at the first intersection with Strindall Drive and Valonia Loop. It's within 150 feet of the intersection with O'Kelly Chapel Road, and staff does have some concerns and would like to see a little more analysis provided, providing data indicating that that queue would not back up out of that traffic circle and cause potential backups onto O'Kelly Chapel Road. Second improvement the applicant has proposed to address traffic calming is a four-way stop condition at the intersection of Rose Pine Drive, which forms the southern border of the site, and Strindall Drive. Four-way stops are typically not considered traffic calming, however, we feel that will probably provide some improvements to safety at the intersection, given the balanced approaches on both of those roadways. They both serve as kind of main roads, so the four-way stop would improve interactions between pedestrians and vehicles at that intersection. That concludes my summary of the applicant's revisions, and they will be adding to that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant's attorney if he has any additional comments
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group here. Again, on behalf of MI Homes, this is a continuation of a case, obviously, that you all heard in April. At that time, we submitted evidence into the record that we believe supported the application at that time. We believed that the application back in April, based upon the evidence that had been submitted at that hearing justified approval of the site plan. However, there were certainly a number of comments and issues that were raised by the council that, as a builder, MI Homes wanted to take under consideration. And I believe that the testimony you're going to hear from tonight, from Jeremy Medlin with MI Homes, who's going to walk through the plan changes that have been made, I believe you all will agree that the plan continues to comply with the requirements for site plan approval, and it's a better plan than we were looking at back in April. There are three areas that you all identified for us to kind of sharpen our pencils and take a look at, and we believe we've addressed all three of those issues. Open space has been altered, as you will hear about, and there have been significant changes in how kind of open space, especially the active open space feels on this site. Traffic calming, we have again sharpened our pencils to take a look and see what we could do to address traffic, and we believe the changes are satisfactory and will ensure safety of motorists and pedestrians alike. And finally, density is being reduced as a result of those changes that are being made. At this time, I will call Jeremy Medlin to testify and describe the changes in greater detail. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Medlin with MI Homes of Raleigh. We took your feedback from the last council meeting. It was very constructive, and we also took the feedback from our homeowners in Evans Farm. I was the developer for the Evans Farm community, and I will be the developer for the Evans Farm Town Home component of this project also. Given the feedback that we received at the last council meeting, we re-looked at the plan, we focused in on the northern area of the property along O'Kelly and Austin Avenue, and we had a passive lawn area there. And we thought, what could we do to improve this area and make it more inviting and let the project breathe better? So what we did is we took that area and we expanded it by reducing the number of units, and we opened up that area, and now we have an area that has a large lawn area for play. We have an open air structure proposed that would be a heavy timber and stone structure with fireplace, so it would be a community gathering area. Due to the great considerations of that area, we're also proposing to do sitting walls that will also blend in well with what we're doing in the Austin area plan along Strindle Drive. And so it really marries the whole site together, and in case we do have some children or some grandkids that come to visit, there will be some play equipment there, swings, merry-go-rounds, and a sandbox. And for cookouts and in recreation, there'll also be picnic tables and grills. So what we've done here is create a community gathering area that would be self-contained to this development and completely separate from the Evans Farm single-family part of the property. And so what we're proposing to do is create yet another amenity that would serve the town home residents. Moving on to the open space for the area, we went back and looked at the open space that was required and what we could propose. The total gathering area and open space requirements for this piece of property, if you looked at the neighborhood green component, the code requires 4,800 square feet of neighborhood green area, and the revised plan that we're now providing provides about 67,000 square feet. That's 14 times what is required. As for open space, Kevin also already pointed out that we're providing 4.52 acres of open space, which is nearly a quarter of the site. Moving on to traffic calming measures, you've already seen the visual with the proposed roundabout on Strindle Drive. This proposed roundabout would anchor the throat of this neighborhood because at that roundabout area, we already have our proposed community art piece, we already have the sitting walls, and everything that we've done there ties in very well with the Austin area plan and embraces that urban feel while also providing for the open space, additional open space We're still providing linear parks, the artwork, the sitting walls, all in that area, and having that roundabout there, or that circle, would just enhance the appeal and the look of the Austin area plan in this portion of Evans Farm. The four-way stop component at Rose Pine and Strindle, I have been on Rose Pine more times than anybody else probably because I built it. It's a brand-new road. The town recently accepted it, probably within the past year. It's a beautiful road. It's got parallel parking up and down it. Unfortunately, there's no residents there, there's nobody living there that uses those parking spaces unless it's on the weekend and they're visiting the park. Given that, during the workdays, people going to and from work use Rose Pine Drive as a drag strip. It's very straight, it's very open, and I've heard the complaints from the neighbors, and I've been privy to it, I've seen it, I've seen it myself. People in the neighborhood speed on that road, and it is a dead-end road, so it's all citizens and residents of Evans Farm. I would be, I am very hopeful that once we have additional rooftops here and people are using those parallel parking spots, that that in itself will calm traffic. But until that happens, I would think a proper solution would be to propose and install a four-way stop condition there. And not to stop short, I would go ahead and I would commit to doing stamped crosswalks there, decorative stamped crosswalks that would tie in with what we've done elsewhere in Evans Farm already, and it would also tie in to what we're proposing to do on the town home section. And those crosswalks are relatively new, and they look great, they're beautiful. One other thing that was mentioned by the town staff was that, or it was suggested that we consider was a circle on Rose Pine and Strindle. I would just like to touch on this. That road is a brand-new road, just accepted by the town, and it would have significant impacts to the recreation site that is already there, and it would also impact the buyer, our home buyer, on Lot 50. And that same individual was the individual that stood up here in front of you a couple weeks ago and bragged about what a great builder we were and what a great home we built for him. And I would just like to say that I can't commit to doing that, I mean, just for his sake. I mean, we pride ourselves in taking care of our buyer, taking care of our homeowners, and that is just something I don't think we could consider because it would negatively impact him. I think the four-way stop condition, the proposed crosswalks, I think that would benefit everyone and accomplish what everyone's shared goals are. The last thing I would like to state is that, you know, when we came in front of you a couple weeks ago, we had a good plan. With your feedback that you've given us, we have a better plan now. So I do appreciate what you've said. I hope you take what we're proposing into consideration, and I would appreciate your support. If you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. At this time, I would like to call Travis Fluid back to testify as to the changes that we have made and how that impacts the testimony he provided previously related to transportation.
Good evening. Travis Fluid with Kimley Horn once again. I've reviewed the proposed changes to the plan, and I believe that the traffic circle proposed at the intersection of Valonia Loop and Strindle will operate effectively at project build-out. Further, I do not believe there will be any queuing issues at this roundabout due to the traffic circle due to the low volumes anticipated on Strindle. I've also reviewed the proposed four-way stop at the intersection of Rose Pine and Strindle Drive. As initial matter, I want to note that, as I testified to previously, in general, I don't believe there's a significant traffic problem in this area, but further with the town homes that will be fronting the street and the likelihood of people utilizing the on-street parking, traffic speeds on Rose Pine Drive will be reduced. With the inclusion of the four-way stop along with the stamped crosswalks that MI is proposing to install, it's my opinion that the plan provides mitigation for traffic impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project.
Thank you, Travis. And at this time, I'll call Robbie Oldham back to testify. He testified previously, he's the engineer of record, and I'm just going to ask him one question. Mr. Oldham, as the project engineer, you've reviewed the changes that have been made since the plan was presented to council last time. Do the changes in any way alter the conclusions you offered at the prior hearing?
No, they do not.
Thank you. So based upon the foregoing testimony, again, we believe we continue to comply with the requirements for approval of a site plan based upon the code standards for the same. I do want to reiterate, we appreciate the town's council's feedback on these issues. I don't think any one of us on the project development team were overly excited about having the project delayed. However, it gave us an opportunity to say, okay, let's take a look, let's figure out what we can do, and I do believe it's a better plan. I know that MI is firmly of the opinion that it's a better plan, and again, nobody at MI Homes was terribly excited about having to wait, but sometimes it works out for the best, and I believe that is the case here. With that said, our team will be here to answer any questions that you all might have, and we hopefully will get support. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll ask of anyone who was sworn in on April 3, if they have additional evidence to present, and I would invite the first speaker forward to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, I'll move on and ask the town staff if they have any additional testimony.
We do not.
Okay, very good. We will now continue the deliberative phase of our hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I would just say I'm very happy with the changes that have been made. I'm very thankful that you all went back and looked at it and really took into consideration the quality of life for people who would be moving to this community and for those who live nearby, so thank you very much.
Other questions?
Can I just ask a couple of questions about traffic? I appreciate the changes that have been made by the applicant as well, so these are just informational questions for me. Kevin, you said when you described that traffic circle in the northern part of the parcel that it was not free-flowing, it was more like a four-way stop, and then you described the four-way stop at the southern part of the parcel as a four-way stop. What's the difference?
I'll let Mr. Jensen with the Facilities and Transportation Department to address that, so he's a better describer of that than I am.
Thank you.
This is probably why you don't let Kevin talk about traffic. It's technically not a four-way stop, it's a compact design, it's not a roundabout.
Right.
A roundabout has splitter islands in it, it's much larger diameter, and speeds coming in and out of a, of a, of a, of a roundabout are much more of a higher speed. This is more of a compact design which almost forces drivers to slow down almost to a stop, okay, and then make the turn. So, again, it's effectively almost like a four-way stop, but again, most four-way stops don't, are not effective in traffic calming, they're, they actually cause more unintended consequences than anything, so that's why we generally shy away from those. But this is just, it's a compact design which almost forces them to come to a really slow, slow movement going around that circle. And again, the median, or the island in front, it's of sufficient size to get, you know, vehicular cars around it, but large trucks or even fire trucks will be such a low nature that they could actually drive on it, it's mountable, so that they can make that turn to respond to a, to a, to a fire or some other urgency.
So there are no stop signs with this traffic circle since it's not a four-way stop, but there are stop signs with that?
We'll put some sort of regulatory control on it, whether it be a yield control or a stop sign, but it's probably, it could be a yield control.
And would that yield be, sorry, yield from the sides or all four?
It'd be on all four. Yeah, on all approaches.
And then there's nothing planted in the middle because that, so that the emergency vehicles can drive over that if they need to, talking about that circuit area in the middle.
Yeah, I mean, generally, these are such a compact design that a large moving truck or even our garbage trucks or fire trucks per se just couldn't make that turning race all the way around, and so they're going to need to mount on top of it to adequately make a left turn.
Is this like the one that's in Weatherstone neighborhood?
Yeah, it's very similar, I mean, I'm not sure, we still have to go through the details on the kind of design they want to do, but I would envision them probably doing a stamped concrete, colored concrete on that to kind of make it blend in with whatever their neighborhood is going to do, but we haven't gotten those details yet, but...
But the size of it, the vehicular movement on it would be like the one in Weatherstone?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where it just slows it down, but doesn't make it come to a complete stop. And so here's just another question, why, I cannot think of the, Mr. Medlin said that a traffic circle would, at the southern part of the parcel, would negatively impact Lot 50. Why is that more of a negative impact than a four-way stop? I'm just curious.
I think it's just, yeah, I'll have to let them talk about that, let them provide testimony.
Because we have to take some of its property for right-of-way, is that what you're saying?
The circle would be bigger, so it would go into his yard.
And to eat into his property.
Correct.
I just was curious to how that would be more of a negative impact.
Yeah, I think if you look on your monitor, on the outside, they show kind of a yellow, two yellow lines, that's kind of represents the curb line, the new curb line that would have to be established for a traffic circle. And again, that kind of impacts the driveway into Lot 50, really makes the intersection a lot more blown up, so to speak. And I think they keep, I think their thought is with the four-way stop, because we have approach volumes on all four approaches that are about even, and we've got pedestrians that may want to cross that roadway, I think they felt like a four-way stop would be a better traffic control measure than maybe putting this and having to have so much disruption with the already brand-new street and the yard.
I totally get that, my, I was just curious as to why it was, and Mr. France did a good job explaining that as well as you. And I think the stamped, the crosswalks that they're going to add are really a great enhancement, will help with pedestrian safety, so I think that's a good enhancement.
Very nice.
As well. I had a question about density, but I'll hold my questions if there are other questions about traffic.
I have no questions.
Okay. So I noticed that the density decrease was 152 to 147, but if you'll go to slide 21, it looks like there are actually six units taken out to add that neighborhood green space. Was there a unit added somewhere to make the gross difference?
One of the units that was removed, some of the movements, some of the units moved over to the side.
Ah, so you just pushed it one way or the other.
So they didn't just take out that one unit, they lost a unit.
I see.
They lost a unit down here at the intersection of Valonia Drive and Rose Pine as well to provide additional buffering kind of down in that corner. So you lost five up here and one down there.
Okay, great. Well, there is a 3 percent reduction in the number of units from the previous plan that we saw. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
The only comments I would add would be, I actually thought it was a pretty good project the last time it was here, would have voted for it. I felt like it complied with the Austin Avenue plan and town's land use plan and such. But I've really got to say, I appreciate my colleagues, some of their concerns and points raised that ultimately resulted in tabling this, and sent a message to the applicant. They've responded, addressed a number of concerns, and now we have a much better project in front of us, so I really do appreciate that. I think it's resulted in something better for the town. So that's just my comments.
Other comments? Are we ready to move into the motion phase? If so, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask Mr. Hells to help us with the motions necessary.
As I mentioned at the beginning, there are no minor modifications for this project, so you're only making one motion, and that's on the approval of the development plan. There are two suggested conditions of approval in the staff report that we would ask be included. One of those is the standard needs to be, needs to comply with all DRC comments before we can approve it, and the other is... it, and the other is that they work with staff and NC DOT to fully vet that traffic circle at Strindall and Valonia, just to make sure that we don't have any issues, because we've only had the revised plans, we haven't actually had a formal submittal yet due to the quick turnaround between the two meetings.
I have a question. If that, if NC DOT says that circle does not work there, is the intent then to move it southward to the next intersection where it looks like there's capacity for it?
I would have to defer the applicant there.
I'm seeing a head nod, I believe. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the intent.
That's the right answer. I'm glad you hear that.
You might want to modify that condition to address that.
Okay. All right, do you have the, let's see here, let's find it. Last page? Nobody wants to make the motion because they're so tricky, they're so wordy. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion. Let's see here. Okay. I make a motion to approve the subdivision and site plan for the reasons discussed earlier. I move that we approve the proposed subdivision and site plan with conditions as stated below as it meets all of the approval criteria set of Section 3.9.2i. This approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature. And two, the proposed traffic circle at Strindall Drive and Valonia Drive shall be installed as shown in the plan set, subject to approval by the Town of Cary Development Review Committee and the NC Department of Transportation. Should either the committee or the NC Department of Transportation believe that it's not an appropriate location for the circle, it will be moved southward to the next intersection.
There's the motion.
Second.
And the second discussion. Mr. Smith?
Well, now, we were looking at those six items, are those assumed?
Right, that's criteria, approval criteria.
I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? Yes.
Could I suggest a friendly amendment to your motion?
Sure, go for it.
That it be that should either the DRC or the NC DOT not approve the installation of the traffic circle at Strindall and Valonia, that the applicant will install a traffic circle at whatever the two names of the street are?
I didn't know what they were, that's why I said go south, but what are they?
Austin Forest Drive and Strindall Drive.
Okay. I make that in the form of a revised motion.
Second.
And the motion, the amendment was seconded. Any other comments by council? I feel I'm going to be the Lone Ranger in this. I'm going to vote against this because I don't think the third criteria, harmony with existing surrounding neighborhoods, I'm not convinced that that criteria's been met, so I'll be voting against this. Other comments? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Mr. Hells, and at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Ask Mr. Silverstein if there's anything we've left out or anything outstanding.
I do not believe so.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Seduce.
There's a motion and the second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.